Let us bow our heads for prayer. The Lord be with you.
Amen.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we ask your blessing upon this city of Biloxi. Grant safety to those who swore to protect and defend it. Grant courage to those who have chosen to serve the citizens. Grant wisdom to those who have been elected to lead. Most of all, Almighty God, give all of us a wide and open heart that we may welcome our fellow citizens, gather together in common purpose, and create a better and brighter future for our city together. We ask all these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
But power be with you. Praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever.
Good morning, everyone. First one we have is item number one. It's consider claims of Mark Thomas or Riley Thomas in the amount of $3,316.36. Do we have any information on this particular? Do we have a statement? Okay.
I'm Mark Thomas.
You want to come on up and introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. I'm Mark Thomas, and I was told to come here today for this. An unfortunate accident happened. And one of the UTVs from the Henderson County backed into my daughter's vehicle, and John Lee wrote.
From Henderson County?
Harrison County.
I'm sorry, UTV, utility?
Yeah, one of them side by sides, the county side by side vehicles.
Okay.
One of those vehicles they purchased to suck up the...
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
They were going along John Lee, and it got to a point where he stopped. She stopped about car lengths of two back. And he put it in reverse and just didn't look. Made an accident and backed up. And what he did is he backed up onto the hood of the car. So that's what it costs to fix the car and have a rental while it's in the shop. Because my daughter does work.
Sorry to interrupt. Has it already been fixed?
No, sir.
Okay.
I was waiting for, working with Mr. Walt Warren and figuring out when it would be the best time when this was going to happen and what was going to be the outcome before I took it and put it in the shop.
Okay, appreciated. This is why he has to stay on his own.
Yeah, he sums it up pretty well. This is an incident of his daughter pulled up in the blind spot of the UTV to vacuum. The worker had backed up to get something that he had missed. And she honked the horn. He didn't hear it. An impact from the vehicle.
Both of them on the road.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't off the side of the road. It was on the road.
No, sir. They were both on the road.
I make a motion due, I presume it was negligence if he backed up and hit her. So motion.
Second.
It's one of those bayou backs. He didn't say over it, but they should have.
Can I make your request?
Motion discussion.
You have two estimates. One small, yeah, because a couple hundred dollars difference between the two. The board needs to determine which one is unique and... Turan probably is lower than the two, $3,066.30.
Unless there's some reason, I recommend the lowest bid. Unless there's some reason not to.
And I think that's where you're rolling.
Yes, sir. I'm fine with that.
At least file with Turan.
In the past, the board has said that it wouldn't pay sales tax. If Turan probably bills the county directly for this, then they won't have to pay sales tax. If he pays it, then he's not going to pay sales tax. The board needs to determine whether or not we can get Turan to vote to bill directly or you're going to have to add to the sales tax to make him hold on to. If he pays it, he's going to have to pay sales tax.
The motion be conditional upon the mighty shop building in Harrison County.
And we're authorized to pay it.
And pay.
The clerk will be authorized to pay it when the bill comes from Turan.
And there was some added on?
What about the rental car?
The rental car, $250 for a rental car was reasonable. So you can send that, add that up, send that amount and make sure that Turan probably knows so they can send the bill to the county.
Would we also do the rental car? We would pay the...
It's a tort claim. That's right. It has to come out of the tort claim account.
I would suggest we pay him direct and let him handle his rental on his...
On the rental, they'd be...
Then he has to deal with sales tax that we're not able to pay.
Rental, he'd have to do that anyway. There's no way to get around that part. If Turan will bill for the repairs directly to the county administrator, and it has to be paid out in the tort account. They can not pay sales tax, so they can use the county's tax ID number.
We can pay them.
They'll only use pay directly to...
$250 and take PD release on that and probably be done with it.
Okay.
I'll get with you after we get it.
If Turan probably gives you trouble on that, have him call panel.
Okay.
It should be like repairing a county vehicle. You're responsible.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
So the motion is... A second is, any further discussion? All the fair, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is consider SMPD proposal for redistricting. Anyone come on up?
Good morning. I'm Allison Hawkins with SMPD Economic Workforce Development Director. We have prepared a proposal for you. Do all of you have it?
Yes.
Okay. Have some copies. If you don't need one.
Do not know.
It is basically the same process, those of you who, well, Marlin. Those that have been around, heard the last one. And I guess if possible, there was two. The last two. That's right. The last two. So the census, of course, is every 10 years. So redistricting is every 10 years. And it won't be determined if and what you have to redistrict until we have the numbers in. And they're not in from the census bureau yet. Or they're not released from the census bureau yet to us at the county level or further down. We should have those by the end of August or end of September, is what we're told. And we'll get to work right after that. You're first in line. So thank you for letting us bring you the proposal. We teamed up this year with Gulf Regional Planning Commission. We don't have a full-time GIS department anymore. So we're going to be working together with them on the mapping portion. They've done this in the past, too, for other areas, other cities, other counties. And we've been working with them pretty regularly on some projects. So we're not worried about that relationship at all. We can add in the legal part of it if you want us to. We haven't in the past. I think you all handled all of that, Mr. Hollman. So I've kind of just left that as that would be the responsibility of the county, the legal description.
Allison, did you have any preliminary papers?
I...
Any type of...
We don't, do you?
In the district, y'all don't?
We don't yet.
We don't have anything. And Ken Holland and Jeff Lottis are both here today. I know Paul was out of town. He wanted to be here. And Leonard's actually up in Stone County this morning. So we do have other members of our team here. One thing I did want to tell you is the price is exactly the same as it was 10 years ago. What else can you say that about?
That's good. I think Super Bowl, Super Bowl of Rockwell, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that they have done it before in the past. And I make a motion that we use SMPD again if you want to, for y'all, a little under the weather.
Okay, we got a motion and a second?
That's a motion.
Okay, we also have a second with Dr. Latt. We need to talk about that. Any further discussion? All the fair, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item three is recognize Johnny Olson with LPK Architects for an update on a multi-partment county. Good to meet you. Gulfport Industries, Seaway. How you doing?
I'm doing well. Good morning.
Looking forward to this update.
Good. Good. So I'm Johnny Olson with LPK Architects. If you recall, over the last, I guess, two years ago, we were contracted to provide professional design services for a multi-department facility which started out as several other, included several other departments. We came through, we met with all of those departments, came to you with a estimated cost for that project. It was then scaled back because that project was a little more grand than I think the county wanted to take on. We scaled that project back to include code administration, zoning, engineering, and tax collector as a satellite office for the tax collector. About a month and a half ago or so, we re-engaged those departments that are included in this summary to give one final pass at their space needs assessment. They did so, and we came up with a gross square footage of 20,856 square feet, which is the building that we are proposing to be located on five acres provided by the Harrison County Development Commission on Seaway Road. We've been working with Bill Labors and have identified a five-acre parcel that has very little wetlands on it up in the far northeast corner of the map that I provided in the packet to you. There's just a touch of wetlands, which they're going through a mitigation process right now on all of that area to try to mitigate all of those wetlands. So that shouldn't be an issue regardless. But the development commission has offered one of the, I guess, the best, one of the best pieces of property on that site. And so we worked with Bill several months ago to provide a access drive that would run parallel to Seaway, kind of connecting all of these parcels like you typically would see in a commercial development. So it makes it easier for somebody to conduct business on that site. They don't have to hit every parcel at Seaway Road with multiple curb cuts. So what we've done is identified that site, which is in line with the new median cut that's under construction right now, making that parcel even easier to access. So with this update, we're now at a proposed budget of between $4 million, almost $4 million even, and $5.2 million at a low and a high cost. So that's our range at this stage, which what we're here today to ask for is approval of the project concept, which allows us to proceed forward. We didn't want to jump off into something without approval of that budget number because frankly, you know, we will design to that budget. We'll try to be as economical as we can. But we need a number associated with our contract so that everybody's on the same page that, hey, they're designing this building, you know, within this budget range. Now, everybody knows that construction costs over the last four months have just skyrocketed. But we're projecting within six months to a year those costs to come back down, to be more manageable. So this budget range may be a pretty big swing, but right now, that's kind of the best we know based on the volatile market conditions. So we'd like to think that it would be closer to that $4 million range, but we can't guarantee it. Part of it depends on how quickly we can get the project designed, bid, and begin construction. You know, we can always proceed with that design kind of if the board, if it's the appetite of the board to kind of put it on the shelf for just a little while to see if costs come down. So be it. But I think everybody's, there's some momentum again. You know, we're sort of coming, hopefully, on the downhill slide from COVID. Looks like this is the project that's really on, has some momentum. So we want to keep that going.
Mr. President? Ken, Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Did we have our engineer look at that and see if there's any little costs that she can cut on it? It seems a little high to me. But I know the things have gone up. But maybe our engineer can take a look at it before we agree a $4 million building. I guess the board agrees. I don't know. That's just my opinion. Just to have her take a look at it before we agree to that price.
Yeah, Ms. Jack is here.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we will, Ms. Jackie will take a look at it and... What do you think about it?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
And I've been working directly with Jackie on this project for over a year. I think right after she came on board. And so we, you know, right now, this estimate is our best professional opinion of that range. Can we design a building that averages, you know, $175 a square foot or less? We will give it our best effort. But right now, it's just so volatile, we can't guarantee that. Now, as far as, you know, my conversations with Jackie are concerned, we don't have a building per se to value engineer yet. We don't have a building designed to begin doing that. So what we're looking at is just some kind of approval to keep going.
Keep moving.
I shall leave. Second. Discussion.
From $2 to $5 million, that's a lot. That's a big job from $2 to $5 million.
Was it ever two on this particular location? I think it was two on the original location. Is that correct?
That was one.
No, sir. I don't think we ever had a $2 million project. I think there was a, I think there was a hope for a $2 million project.
Right. The number 2 million was thrown out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where that was originated.
So, Mr. Olson, a little question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're doing this for the safety, of course, of our employees, but for the convenience of our citizens. At the end of the tax collector's area, could we do a drive-through? I know you and I kind of talked about that. I think that's really, city Biloxi, you can take the water that way.
Right. So there's a couple of schools of thought on that. One, we're doing a county complex right now in Lauderdale County. And we purposely, in the conversations and with a security consultant talking to us, we pulled that drive-through out. Yes, it's convenient. It also gives you a weak point for somebody with ill will to do something at that teller window, let's call it, you know, with the slide-out and so forth. Now, you know, it could be...
How do banks do it? They've got a lot of money.
That can happen anywhere.
It can happen anywhere.
Yeah.
Banks are, in some cases, banks are phasing out drive-throughs.
What you can do is give us an alternative, be it on that table.
To a point, yes, sir. But I think it's very convenient. It's just, all we're saying is professionally, we're just saying there's risks associated with it. As long as everybody's comfortable with that risk level, which is probably low, but as long as everybody's comfortable with that risk level, then yeah, it's a matter of convenience for sure.
Yeah. Could you do that? Maybe give an option like Dr. Latt said?
We can. It's not going to add, you know, we're talking about a convenience window anyway.
And in our discussions, we were also talking about how all the other departments could really benefit from it as well, especially the way that we saw during COVID. If we had any issues where we're trying to transport papers in and out of a building, if we could have a sliding tray rather than trying to segregate people, it would help us all if we could have an intake window that primarily worked with the tax collector. So I think we're very interested in making that work.
Have y'all had discussions with the tax collector on that?
Yeah.
Not on that.
How do you feel, Sharon?
Things that we discussed even before, we've discussed a slide-out window for a long time now.
At one point, there was the...
Just make sure, the only thing, I don't think, make sure that you stay in touch with the tax collector.
Absolutely. We have been meeting.
Yeah, but Ms. Test, let's go ahead and ask. Do we have anyone still on it?
I've been there for so many years. I did not care if we had a drive-through or not. We like the convenience of a drive-through, but it's just a matter of trying to make the people use the drive-through for what it's used for, property taxes and taggertals only. You are going to have those people who are not going to do that. They're going to do a new title there because they got their kids in their car. Well, a new title takes, you know, can take four minutes. Or a taggartal is less than a minute, so a few seconds. So it's just a matter of trying to, you know, get the people, you know, they're going to steadily want to use that drive-through for something that it's not used for.
Well, okay, I think someone made this, yes, to get with you to see if that's going to be convenient for you. If you don't want it, then we'll...
We don't need to make that decision.
Absolutely. That's right.
That's right. And we can, I don't want to get in the weeds and bog me down, but you know, we can work through the pros and cons of all of that.
Okay. Well, we had a motion and a proper second to accept the recognition. So, yeah, to go forward. All in favor of that motion, say aye? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item four is recognize Tina Gillich, Secretary representing Gulfries Property LLC for continued protest on exemption of outdoor legal property granted in lieu of a monthly payment of Gulfries Regional Airport.
Good morning.
If you can identify yourself, we appreciate it.
Yes, I'm Tina Gillich. How you doing? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm over here in Biloxi across the street, and I'm here representing Gulfries Properties 2 LLC, which is owned by Mr. Braun, Robert Braun. He's here with me to assist on this. And what we're here for is something exciting to request that you continue the ad valorem exemption. I was teasing about that. The ad valorem exemption on his property that he's built, which is located off of Airport Road. And to tell you the history about it, this property is the Concourse Airport Office Park. And where it's located is if you're going down Airport Road, if you take a right, you would go into the airport. And if you take a left, you would go into Mr. Braun, Gulfries Properties 2, Concourse Office Park. So the history of his development of this, because Mr. Braun's a contractor and built the five buildings now that are located on this property. The history of it is, this is showing the connection of where this is. This is the airport. And then right across the street are these three tax parcels that we're here today on to ask that you continue the tax exemption on them. That was granted in 2018. But so what you have here, the five buildings, tax parcel one, I'm going to show it a little bit closer. So here you would come into the Concourse Office Park. The first building that was built is going to be on the tax, it was ground lease number one with the airport in 1998. And it is on lot number one on this tax parcel 025. And the, the, the government is located in there now. You have Homeland Security. Yeah. So this, this is the first ground lease. And then you have the second ground lease with the airport is tax parcel 026. Okay, this one was in 2000 was the ground lease. Then Mr. Braun, he entered into a third ground lease with the airport in 2001. He constructed these buildings located on lots three and five on this tax parcel 030. So he built the buildings and he runs them out. The intent at the airport in the Gulfries was to have headquarters offices. So throughout these 20 years, that's what's...
Hello, y'all there?
Can you hear me?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, remember, we hear you. Thanks.
So throughout these...
Hello.
Hello, can you hear us?
We can't hear y'all.
Oh, okay. So throughout, so throughout the 20 years, Mr. Braun has built and developed, and what is there now is the Department of Homeland Security. So here we have Department of Homeland Security, which is ICE, Immigration, Customs, and Border Patrol, FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, US Army Corps of Engineers, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, and Customs Border Patrol. The history of all that is kind of interesting. You had the Blue Light Strike Task Force in 1988, and they were out by Hughes Avenue. Then they moved into this building right here, the tax parcel lot number one. And now it became under the Department of Homeland Security after 9/11, when the Department of Homeland Security was enacted by President George Bush after the 9/11 terrorist attack. So this is where we have, everybody's moved into the buildings. You have Homeland Security. A case came out of Mississippi Supreme Court in 2018. And it was the Rankin County versus Leipold. In that case, it said that if you are a tenant of airport property, then you are exempt from ad valorem taxes.
That's right.
So that was May of 2018, Mississippi Supreme Court. So what everyone does is come to you, August, September of 2018, the Board of Supervisors granted the tax exemption because it was a commercial purpose.
It was a legal, Tim, I don't mean to interrupt.
That's all right.
This issue with properties leased from airports, that was a legal issue. We had no option.
That's right.
On that. That was statutorily required because the airport on the property, even though it was leased. And we granted that, those exemptions. Are we still legally obligated to do that?
The law was changed in 2018 or 19?
19.
2019 was defining commercial purposes. I want to get across to Tina for a minute. The question would be whether or not these would now fit within commercial purposes of the, or airport-related under the new statute. Now, the years that we're talking about, what year? This is 20 taxes, right?
Yeah.
So the statute was in effect at the time. And so it's not clear, quite frankly, because there's a case called G4, which is a teen-up tax. Unfortunately, G4 is dealing with tax years that preceded the amendment to the statute. So...
And if I understand it correctly, the new statute, the properties had to be somewhat related to the airport business or whatever the terminology is.
Right.
And if it's not, then therefore it doesn't have any claim necessarily to a tax exemption.
That's correct. And so now Tina has submitted an affidavit of Mr. Braun making an argument that this is airport-related because it contained...
I'm sorry.
I'd like to hear it.
I'm sorry, they have submitted an affidavit for Mr. Braun arguing that it is airport-related within the definition of statute this morning.
Well, this is, this is, Beverly, I'm sorry. But from what I've heard, Ms. Gillich just say TSA, the Homeland Security, the Customs, to me, that is all airport-related. Is that not the way you see it?
I think that's the question the board has to answer. If you read the definition, you know, you could argue that it is airport-related, but you could also argue that it's not. They did a good job of doing an affidavit that supports that it is. So I think that's for this board to determine whether or not it is airport-related or not under the new statute. There's another issue that has not really been argued is at the time this lease was done, the court held previously at the inception of the lease, the property was exempt. Even though this lease did pay taxes at one point in time and under the lease agreed to pay the ad valorem taxes. But then because of the Lakeland case and the G4 case, they were held to be exempt from the inception. The argument is, I don't know whether that means that after the 2019 amendment, you don't go back, you go back to the inception of the lease, it was exempt in 2019, and say it's not exempt if it's not airport-related. And I'm not, I'm not saying this is not airport-related. I think that's a decision the board makes, that they're asking you to make. If it's airport-related, this board determined that it is airport-related, they're entitled to the exemption, even though they're not...
I'd like to hear the argument that it is, in fact, airport-related. And have some time to thought this. How much, how much taxes are we talking about?
$18,000.
How much? I'm sorry, I didn't...
For the three tax parcels, it's approximately $80,000.
$80,000?
$80,000. But we're here to say, under the amendment to the statute in 2019, that the property is definitely airport-related. And Mr. Braun's going to talk about that because he knows what goes on with the Customs Border Patrol and Homeland Security. That is a lot of security protocol with everything that goes on with the airport. And the airplanes flying in under the definition. The amendment talks about if it's substantially unrelated. And is this a substantially unrelated or is this an airport-related use? Now, there's other taxpayers in this area. They pay their taxes because they knew they were insurance company. They knew they were a hotel. They weren't related to activities of who's flying in, and somebody's coming in with a gun, and they need to call ATF over there. So we're here saying that we're unique. We're a unique use of this land that definitely benefits the airport. FEMA, Hurricane Katrina. FEMA was critical to getting the airport back and working, shipping supplies in. So the use of this, I'd just like to...
Let me read for the board, you know, what this is...
Quite honestly, quite honestly, Ms. Gillich, I tend to agree with you because all of those entities or government entities that you named, and Homeland Security is TSA. You can't go get on an airplane, trust me, I know from recent experience, that without going through, passing through TSA, as well as the others. So I would, I'm comfortable with giving the exemption. I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
It's actually, if they qualify, there's not a question. They're exempt. That's period. So if they qualify, here's the definition that I think applies. Unrelated contract leases and other arrangement means any lease, contract, or other arrangement entered into by the authority in accordance with Section 61321, pursuant to which the current primary use of the structures, improvement, or facilities erected, installed, constructed, or located, connected, or with, are substantially unrelated to the support of the following airport activity. This is where this gets a little bit, so this would be unrelated now. The taking off and landing of commercial aircraft.
Right. But they're not substantially unrelated, but they're not, I mean, they're related, much less substantially unrelated than...
Well, I think we've got to be careful how we press related. I'd like to hear what the airport has to say about it.
Yeah.
Would you like to hear that the airport officials here? We need to have, they probably better than anybody could tell us the relationship with these entities with them than us making that decision.
I think that might be something the board might want to consider.
I think that's
You've got screw district taxes.
I'd be glad to listen to the owner, but we need to also listen, see what the airport has to say.
Okay. So what we want to do, the owner, you want to get up and identify yourself and say something?
If I would, I'd like to give y'all this affidavit, but he's here to answer your questions.
Sure.
Can we make that part of the record?
Yes. Motion made.
I have the originals to give to the, I have the originals to give to
All in favor of this motion, make this part of the board, say aye. All opposed, Mr. Garrett. Okay, you have to identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Bobby Braun. I built the airport property that we're in question about here. And I, I heard your good question, Marlon, if you wanted, somebody from the airport. Clay Williams rented from me for 10 years. He's now the airport director. He and I have worked for 23 years together. And this was put back on the tax rolls. Who's the tax assistant?
The tax lady.
Tax
Tax law attorney.
Paul. Do y'all even know the government entities that are out there besides what we spoke about today? Okay. Due to security protocol, you don't see any signs about ICE out there or U.S. Marshals or ATF? Now, if you go on a website, you can see where they're located, but you're not supposed to know what's in those buildings. And I can't tell you the function they do other than what's public record now.
But, Mr. Bobby,
Yes.
I was on a plane about a month ago, two months ago, sitting next to one of those marshals. And, you know, we just discovered that conversation, which I know he was off duty. But still, I know that they do put these marshals on these planes.
That's correct.
Homeland Security there because TSA has Homeland Security badges on their uniform.
That's correct. Let me give you a little background. I come from a boat building background when I was in high school and college and, and after I got through with that, I decided to go into custom home building and I retired in 99. Well, you can only polish your battery terminals on your boat so many times in a month. So after I, I did that for several months, I said, well, let me build some property, let me build some commercial office buildings at the airport property. So Tom Sawyer and I built the first building out there, and the rest of it is history. But this all evolved from the Blue Lightning Strike Force. I, I look around this room, I'm considerably older than most of you, so I try to keep everything very, very simple. Simple for me and simple for everyone else. The Blue Lightning Strike Force was a team, I'm sure you're familiar with it, over on Hughes Avenue. They were a fast response team for drug interdiction. They outgrew that space, they're in old trailers, they're on the east side of the airport property, and they decided to move to the north side of the airport property. We built a hardened building over there, which means lots of cameras, lots of steel, a lot of, a lot of bulletproof doors, a lot of antennas on the roof. And they took over that function. They monitored aircraft, cars and boats, air, sea and land. That was their mission. They started in 1988, they moved to the airport in 2000. Their mission was to fight increased drug activity. It started down in Florida, Florida got hot, so they moved west. Well, the port of Gulfport in Podunk, South Mississippi was a good place for drugs to come in, so they fought that. We have a hotter block watch center within the ICE building. And it's manned 24/7. You'll read it in the affidavit, I'm gonna try to skip through it and be very quick about it. But they, they have a land room within the building that allows them to monitor air, air, sea and land. They go 500 miles south, they go 500 miles north, east and west. And that's about 250,000 miles of square space that they monitor out of that building. So they can immediately have a helicopter, a plane, a boat, or tactical vehicles to go and, and fight this drug trafficking. So ICE has a critical portion of service that they do with the airport. Now, at, at the port building, any flight that comes in, what, what is this called? Is this the Biloxi Gulfport Airport? No, it's the Gulfport Biloxi International Airport. Any private plane that flies in must clear customs. The guys go across the street, a lot of times they go south, sometimes they go to another facility on the east side and they clear the passengers. What happens if a gun's found? ATF is called. What happens if a felon or a criminal is found? Then, then the marshals come over to take possession of a criminal and they process them. What happens if anything is found, an unidentified substance? Then a CBP officer, Customs and Border Patrol officer that has agriculture experience comes over, takes the substance, goes across to the lab and analyzes it. And it just goes on and on and on. So they have many, many interactions with the airport. They fly out all the time to go to San Francisco for a felon.
Mr. Braun, I don't mean to interrupt, but you have made an eloquent argument. Your affidavit's even better. I don't see, in my
I think we're ready.
When I look at the board, it's, it's not substantially unrelated to airport, support of airport activities.
I would still, I would still like to hear Clay and him, see what their opinion is. Instead, the airport, they could give us, we're talking about a lot of money both for him
We're talking about a lot of money.
You're talking about the taxpayers as well as, and I don't want to cheat him out of anything that he deserved. But I think we need to listen to Clay. And, and I would be more comfortable in granting that exemption if Clay would verify the relationship of these people that he's talking about to that airport and how critical they are to it.
Most importantly, the Supreme Court has decided twice. And here I am for the third time. And as old as I am, I don't want to waste anybody's time or money to belabor this fact, that here we are again, guys.
The Supreme Court changed the law, okay, in 19
They did.
And so the two cases before that, the G four case didn't address the change in the law because the tax years, they were talking about predated the change in the law anyway, so it didn't matter. The new law, I think, changes things, but as, as I read, read his affidavit, Tina, from out of the forum, listening to him, I think, I don't have a problem to listen to the airport because they, they all know.
I guess what I'm saying is, the, the law enforcement agencies that he's talking about would have the same responsibility if they weren't out there.
Yeah, that was, that was the point I was about to
Whether they out there or not, I'm sure there's other locations where these, these law enforcement agencies are located are not on airport leased property. And, and are not getting tax exempted if they're leased, I presume. So I, I
I don't have a problem.
I think we need to have the airport before we make the decision.
I had that conversation as well. I'm thinking if all this was located on Hughes Avenue, would we give Hughes Avenue a location object?
No.
Doing the same service.
We won't do that, Mr. Clay.
If it's leased property, the lease owner has to pay the taxes, even though they are, he is leasing to a governmental entity, I presume, you know?
Yes. So it's probably the board, so the board knows, because it's happened, it said they had a closing Friday. And so there's an issue about the closing, did it get closed, or is this?
Okay, let me, let me give you a little history. Why are we here today about six or seven months after the taxes were issued? Crazy, isn't it? We, I should have been here six or seven months ago, met him in this argument. These taxes were sent out, where were they sent? That's the first thing I told Ms. Gillis, just where, we didn't get a
They were sent to the airport.
Okay, they were sent to the airport, so what happened?
I, I don't know.
Okay, we don't know.
They were sent to the airport. They were sent to the airport according to the, the, I did look at the tax bill, it was sent to the airport. What they did with it, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we assumed we were still exempt. We pay our bills timely and we pride ourselves in that. And even, even, the very question is, are we a service to the airport? Are we airport related? Granted, we don't have fuel trucks, we don't change tires, we don't train flight stewardess to warn you about, put your seat back in the most uncomfortable position, watch out for baggage dropping when you open up the overhead compartments. Because you know, shift happens, right? So we don't do that directly, but we have many other services that our government agencies provide that are directly related. And that's my argument today. Any other questions?
My motion would be to table until we hear from the airport, and then after we hear from the airport, we can act on it.
My concern, I was asking about, is there any, is there any urgency in getting that?
No.
So we can just go to the next program?
No, this has been seven months, so tomorrow or next week?
In their defense, normally a taxpayer gets its notice and they have a certain amount of time
That's right.
to appeal, and you're out of time. But because your lawyer told me you had not gotten notice, and I checked with the tax, the bill
And you saw where it went.
So the board is considering you're out of time because you didn't get notice. And so that's the reason they're here. But the taxes, I, I didn't think the tax assistant, when they called me about this, should make that decision. That's a decision this board should make as to whether or not it's exempt or not. So that's the reason we're here today. I'm sorry you didn't get notice. We don't control who owns the property, they're looking at a proper, a tax roll, who owns the property, that's who they're sending a bill to.
And in defense of them as well, it's named Airport Concourse Office Park. You can understand the confusion, they would assume it would be to the airport.
It's about the board now too. Mr. Braun, he's basically ready to retire, and this came up during closing. The lawyers in, in Jackson said, I said, it's exempt. You know, we have this from the Board of Supervisors, and he, I'm telling the lawyer it's exempt. You're the title lawyer, you researched the title. Well, the Monday, he says, Tina, there are taxes on it. So I called Tim right away, and I, so that's why we're here. But to let you know, so we've kind of continued this issue on the closing of this transaction. But we've already been before the airport authority and Clay Williams and the colonels, and they have, they have unanimous approval to the transaction and everything. We don't have a problem at all with the airport. I've worked with Bobby Long, the lawyer for the airport, they know everything that's, that's been involved in it. I guess the only thing legally that I'm thinking about is, are we substantially unrelated? Are we substantially unrelated to the airport activities? And even, I'd say, no. Yeah, and even if you talk to the airport authorities, I mean, the airport authority, Clay Williams, if they would say, well, I'm just saying, we would like to try to conclude in the interest of everyone to try to help to ease
I, I don't disagree with you. What I'm simply saying is, if this board is fixing to grant eighty some thousand dollars worth of tax exemption, and we need to hear from the airport, because if I have constituents calling me, won't know why, they get an exemption and they have substantially business with the airport and they don't, I want to know that, and I want to hear from the airport.
And I don't think we have a problem with that. And just, we're not, we're not here complaining about anybody not receiving notice. What was going on last year, COVID? You know, offices have been shut down and closed down, and we, we're just happy that we found it when we did. Unfortunately, it's July, but we appreciate so much you letting us get before you right now, really, we sincerely do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll just, we have to take down the advisement, and we'll request that next board.
Request that for
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We have a motion and a second to table.
Gotcha.
Okay, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll get with, with Clay Williams, form up from the airport.
Right.
Just for the discussion. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I advise Bobby Triceley, Parks and Recreation Director. Want to talk about concessions?
Soccer concessions, you said.
Okay.
So the contract is up with the guy that we had the contract with, GB concessions. And just here to figure out what y'all want to do going forward.
I'm sorry.
The concession is soccer. The contract is up with GB concessions. And we just need to figure out what we're gonna do going forward. My opinion is give it back to soccer and let them have it, but
I agree.
that's not my decision, so.
If you don't mind me saying, I've had so many people, especially in the success community, small areas, that say, this was our bread and butter. How do you think we buy these uniforms? How do you think we do all this and keep it, you know, low for children of all ages and sizes and incomes to afford it? That, I agree.
I agree with
I agree.
They do have a licensed person. They do have, they've sent me a food permit for the person that would be running their concession, and, and the person is licensed, so
That was my question.
Yep. I guess, I have it. I have a copy of the, the serve Yeah. So I'll send that in as soon as we decide that that's what we want to do.
So is this just for soccer, or are we saying for all the
Well, we already all love them.
All the other ones are already done.
Yeah, soccer's the only one, that was what?
Rebecca is absolutely right, those smaller groups, that's their bread and butter.
All right.
So I'll make a motion, if that's a good, I'll return it to, to the, the teams, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, soccer. Here we The motion is probably second, it's probably a discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
I'm sure we're dealing with some of the stuff with soccer, as long as we're dealing with, the rest has already been dealt with.
That's right.
All right. We're gonna have to modify there.
We'll just modify like we had before, that requires them to have a licensed person.
And no health issues, anything involved in this, I mean, for, no health issues.
You know, it's one of those things where there's always a possibility, but it hadn't happened before.
Well, it would be true with the smaller groups that are already doing it.
It hadn't happened before. The only thing they, before there was a problem, so Bobby knows, is there was, taking care of the equipment and stuff, everybody needed to be responsible for that, whoever their vendor is. Because they remember you, more than to replace one each other.
We have now.
Yeah.
We weren't, but we are now.
We are, okay.
All right, I, I, item six is Uh, go ahead.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, President. Are they gonna be responsible for keeping it clean and making sure all of the equipment they have and they need and everything is in there? Are we gonna have to go back and clean it up afterwards and all that kind of thing? And have we been paid from the last vendor?
Correct. The vendor of GB concessions still owes us money. And when he left and vacated the, the location at soccer, it's all, it was all.
The equipment and all that.
The equipment.
Did we address that bother and make sure?
Yep. Okay. I don't, what, what we want to do is go past new collections.
How much is it?
They get a letter from Legal.
No, I didn't.
We don't even know, I mean
We don't know what
If I had to guess, I'd say it's about four or five thousand dollars, if I had to guess. Now, that's just for 21, because he owes us for 19, but we kind of let that go, as I understood it.
The board will offer, I will write a letter, demand to them, yes, that we come up with a We're gonna take the next step when we're done playing our
Bobby, my question going forward, are we going to just let them have the building and, and they can sell whatever they want and do whatever they want? Or, and let them be responsible for keeping it, going forward? Let them be responsible for keeping it clean and making sure the equipment's operating safely and all that kind of stuff? That, that's gonna be on them, or how's that gonna work?
Well, right now, the, the leagues that we have that are using our, utilizing our facilities, they do a great job. They're emptying their grease regularly, they are, and we come in and do a small cleaning, but there's not much that we have to do. Soccer was the only place that I had to put four guys for four days to get that place cleaned. And then we actually had to carry stuff out and pressure wash. And there's, it's, it's pretty bad to see the pictures. But every other place has been wonderful. So it hasn't been an issue.
But you're like, are, are gonna have the soccer do the same thing as the smaller leagues? That's all I'm trying to get you to tell me
Yes.
what we're gonna do.
Yes, soccer will do the same thing as the smaller leagues.
Okay, that's all we need, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion like Tim suggested to give Legal the right to reach out to GB concessions and demand past money owed for 2018, 2021.
Okay, can we get a second to that motion?
If you want to include that, because
Including damages and cleanup.
There you go.
Okay.
Heard that, Brett?
Okay. All right, all in, in further discussion, if not in further discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion here, item six, the board approving Bobby Triceley and Doug Albrecht's performance at 10 to 2021 National Parks Center and the Recreation Association Conference in Nashville, Tennessee.
in Nashville, Tennessee.
Second.
Yeah, in further discussion, in this discussion, if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Say aye.
Thank you, Bobby.
If you have a consent agenda, item number seventy thirteen has been placed on the consent agenda, same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care, item fourteen, order acknowledging receipt of an improvement petition for decreases to the twenty twenty real property role as recommended by tax assessor. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care, item fifteen, order acknowledging receipt of an improvement petition for decrease, decreases to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen real property role as recommended by tax assessor. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item sixteen, order spreading twenty minutes personnel changes for the tax assessor's office as listed and on file with the payroll, with payroll and human resource department. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item seventeen, order proven purchase of software in the amount of six thousand eight sixteen nine four from CDWG for the tax collector's office payable from zero zero one, one zero four nine two zero using funds from the interface, from the interface keys and authorized in the budget. Your fourth, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item eighteen, order spreading twenty minutes personnel changes for the tax collector's office as listed and on file with the payroll administrator and human resource department. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item nineteen, order proven travel for Trey McKnight, education director to attend the twenty twenty-one Key Alabama and Key Mississippi Beautiful Conference in Birmingham, Alabama on August twenty-five, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one through August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, and use of county vehicle.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item twenty on the circuit clerk, order acknowledging receipt of a letter from Secretary of State's Office, proven Harrison County HVA application amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item twenty-one, order proven overnight stay and travel to and from Rankin County for circuit clerk, Conner Ladner, judge, court administrator, bailiff and two clerks for the Jewish election and trial. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item twenty-two on our county Indian Department, order accepting the lowest and best bid for W C Ford Inc., received on July second, twenty twenty-one for facilities demolition at forty-seven Maple Drive, Gulfport, Mississippi, as received by the Indian Department, authorized the board president to execute contracts after review by the board attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
That's the old deal.
Yeah, this is the old detention center.
Okay, Supervisor Rocco.
Anybody, can you hear me? Um, I just have one question, they're unrelated, but they are, can they be related? We have an agreement with Mr. Ford that he was to leave a three-hundred-foot tree bumper and he went back to twenty-five feet and was supposed to replant that. Did we make this a word contingent on the fact that he does his obligation? He wrote it, it was a, it was a judicial use and he said that he would do it and I have waited two years patiently and there has been no attempt to plant, replant that bumper.
Can you tell us the location of where you're talking about?
On Bessel Road.
On Bessel Road?
He's well aware of it.
Okay.
This is on the board notice and Connie certainly where we, we from time to time represent Mr. Ford. After Connie spoke with me about this, I made a phone call and I'm told that that will be taken care of, but Mr. Ford has, you know, y'all know Mr. Ford, I love him to death, but I can't really advise except, and we'll make another phone call to follow up on that just a week or ten days ago, so that's not enough time to do it.
We, we met out there and brought the letter that he had signed and highlighted the letter he had signed and he said he would do it and he did not, and has not.
The problem is you can't connect this contract. This is a bid toward.
Let me ask you a question. The project, whatever she's talking about, was that a bid process?
No.
It was not a bid process.
I understand it's a subdivision or something is what I was told.
Well, that's different, if it were a bid process.
No, it was a dirt pit.
A dirt pit.
The dirt pit that was supposed to have a three-hundred-foot bumper around it and he signed a piece of paper saying he would do it and he has not done it. And I, I don't, I don't know if he's in operation or not, I think he might be.
Okay, I don't think you can connect the two, but Connie, if you will send me that piece of paper like we talked about, I'll be glad to speak with them again and try to get a timetable that it will be done.
Okay, I will get Pat to do that. It's all right with the board to have Pat send the letter and then you attach a letter to that letter.
It'll be free of charge, I will make a phone call and speak to them themselves.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, we have a ten-thirty appeal.
Connie, mute your comment.
We have a ten-thirty appeal, so.
Mr. President, we do have a fault with the appeal. The appellant, Donna Lee, did not pay for the transcript and the ordinance requires the
transcript to be paid for. The transcript is in your records and he has his copy, but to date, he has not yet paid for the transcript for the appeal. I'll see Mr. Ali here.
Patrick, didn't we, that was not part of the ordinance when this appeal was filed, that you had to pay. It said you had to purchase a transcript, but it wasn't mandatory for the appeal. You've changed that since then, right?
Right.
But Mr. Lattner and I talked about it, at the time this appeal was filed, you had to pay a deposit and then you also had to contact and get a transcript, but it doesn't say anything about this page for the transcript. So, that was later changed in the last couple of weeks, I believe.
It was in May of twenty-one when it went into effect.
Yeah, well, that is a major part of the issue with the appeal and paying for that, but he had, if I own a bank record, he has not paid for that transcript and that goes directly to the person that's providing that service, so that, that person has provided that services and hasn't got recompense for it.
This is, and we talked about this ahead of time, the problem with this is that the code did not require.
I got you, I got you on that.
And so, what happened on this appeal, when they, when we spoke about it, they had not paid for the transcript, I said she shouldn't provide it unless, but then we got to talking about whether or not the board was going to have a transcript or not to read as to what was happening, so you kind of got two problems. You wouldn't have it if it, whatever.
If the ownership's on, on the affiliate to, to provide a transcript and we don't have, we don't have a hearing.
It wasn't, at the, at the time this was done, the problem was the code didn't say, if, if you say you got to pay a fifty-dollar appeal fee plus you got to pay for the transcript, otherwise you can't appeal, that's fine, then they not qualify for the appeal. That is not what the code said at the time this was.
I move table number twenty-six here at the.
Yeah, I, I will second that motion based on the fact that, that there, it's hard to have an appeal on telephones, so I, I would, I would move it to table, second, Connie motion.
Just for the board to know, I believe we have some residents from the, near the social industrial park that are here for this, this matter, but I do not see Mr. Ali, the appellant, and he wasn't outside when I looked.
So, we have a motion.
I think there's a motion on the floor to table.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah, we have a motion on the floor, they're in further discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion care.
Do we have a date for it to come back up?
Don't have a date, but we can, we want to set it for the first, the next, the next meeting.
Next meeting.
August second.
Wait, man, he's making.
I believe we have a couple of appeals already scheduled for that date.
August the second?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have the list either.
Well, if it continues, not the second, if not, August second, it'd be August ninth.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
August ninth, that would be responsible, I know. Okay, we already say August ninth, you ready?
That's okay.
So, for y'all to follow back, can we table this until August ninth?
Sorry for your convenience.
Thank you all. Go back to number twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item twenty-three is reconsidered the previous request of the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission to authorize and approve work authorization, number twenty-one zero zero one with Tulsa Consulting Services to LLC for public safety radio system design and procurement specification as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communication Commission at the meeting in April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item twenty-four, order proven travel for Brandon Clark and Chase, Chase Monday to the fire academy for the firefighters.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Can you clarify if you allow approving?
I can't understand it.
I'm sorry, you made a motion to reconsider, but you didn't say whether you're going to approve.
We didn't, we didn't, we just reconsidered, now we got to consider it.
Right, correct.
Okay, we need to, okay, so we need to, okay, we did, okay, so we need to consider.
That's, that's the one we rejected, the bid, wasn't it?
Right. The motion to approve, if that's what you're going to do.
Or deny.
Okay, so we need to.
Are you talking about number twenty-three? Either consider or either approve or deny.
You move to reconsider, but then you have a reconsider for. Okay, so now we need a motion to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve Tulsa Consulting Services contract.
Sure.
Second, in, in discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, thank you. And then that, that twenty-four. We just read it, so can we get a motion of twenty-four? Second.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item twenty-five, order proven submission of applications for twenty twenty-one emergency road and bridge fund for BRR twenty-four thirty, social lander road over Alexa River and BRR and BRR twenty-four one twenty-three, lander road over Taylor Creek branch, said Alexa would submit the BRR application for the reconstruction and right-of-way acquisition from BRR twenty-four seven, Ohio Station seven over Howard Creek. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Can we just do twenty-six, I'll have you want to take it from twenty-seven?
Yes, sir, uh, numbers twenty-seven, three thirty-one are regular cases before the planning commission and we'd ask that you concur with the recommendations of the planning commission for this case. Twenty-six, I'm sorry, twenty-seven, motion.
Motion. James.
All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion care. So, move on down to item, under personnel, order proven payment of plan that's listed to be paid on the toward account, number thirty-two. Item thirty-two.
Way.
Motion.
Hold, just a minute.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Second.
Yeah, we, we old school a bit a couple of times.
I'm scared to hit the button, man.
I'm in your mode. I don't want to hit nothing.
I'm not hitting nothing. Okay, go ahead.
We got a motion that's in progress. All, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion care, item thirty-three, order spreading twenty minutes personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item thirty-four, order procurement of the county administrator on employment as listed and on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-five, order concurrent with your role manager on employment as listed and on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion.
Motion.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item thirty-six, we just want to check in with Devon and Connie, y'all still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to check. Item thirty-six, order spreading.
I'm happy I'm here.
Order spreading twenty minutes personnel changes in the office of the circuit clerk and listed on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-seven, thirty-seven, yeah. Order spreading twenty minutes, the list of the works to local and state contract order issued by the purchasing department for the month of June twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the sheriff, he's going to, let's give us a report on it.
Uh, currently, we have six twelve, forty-six misdemeanors, one hundred and three females, thirty-two that are cleared and twenty-nine federal inmates.
Also, I have one thing with, on, on this sheriff, and Tim, you make it happen with this, we, we know we have a meeting tomorrow for the mental health. We had an issue that was taken off the agenda, the sheriff had, you know, and my question to you is, tomorrow, if that issue comes back up, are we allowed to vote on that issue tomorrow, being this a special meeting?
Talking about the amendment to his budget?
Yes. Do we have to make a decision today or can it be made tomorrow?
Let the board can move to amend the agenda even for a special meeting if administers are connected, that's special, I mean, that's connected to the mental health issue.
But that's what, Ken, that's what the board at the last meeting, it was, did I, that agenda item was actually not discussed at the last meeting for the same reason, because we had a mental health meeting with the State Department of Mental Health.
Right.
To see if they could help us cover the sheriff's costs in transport, so I, I just thought maybe we should.
Yeah.
But that's tomorrow after we meet with the mental health.
That's an interim meeting also.
Right, I, I agree, I just want to, but, but the decision can be voted on at that meeting, is my question.
Right, I, I agree, I just want to, but, but the decision can't be voted on at that meeting, is my question.
You can, I think that's, the board would have to move to amend the agenda and add that to consideration. It's a, it would be a budget amendment, is what it would be.
Sheriff, why'd you ask to take it off?
He didn't.
When did we do that?
No, I was. I asked to take it off because I went back on the last meeting and the board, when it was brought up then, I think it was Supervisor Ladner that said, well, I would wait until after the meeting with the mental health. And so what happened was, I think Brittany just automatically put it back on there. It wasn't a conspiracy or anything.
I'll explain what the issue was, that, that, that I was confused, believe it or not. I couldn't understand at the time why we would have a sheriff's request for transportation, which I think he said roughly two hundred something thousand, I don't remember. It doesn't matter like that, but it's. And also contracting with the hospital to take them, so I couldn't see why we would have them vote.
Both of those, both of those items, we wanted to think that the mental health people tomorrow first.
If our intention is to transport people throughout the state with the CSU, then we won't be putting them necessarily in the hospital, so it wouldn't be contradictory.
Gotcha.
Unless it, I mean, an absolute overload throughout the state, then we would have to use the hospital. So that's what the confusion was about, John.
Well, Mr. Vice President, can I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, I think it's a courtesy to let the elected official, uh, no, be notified if something has been removed from his agenda. And is that going to be the practice in the future for elected officials to?
Mr. McAdams, I don't think the elected official knew it was put back on there, quite frankly, because it was removed at the last meeting and sheriff was there.
If you call him, if you call him.
It wasn't, I believe Brittany just automatically put it back on there, but if you pull the tape from the last meeting, the board asked that that, as well as the contracts of, any, if and any contracts we may have with the private hospitals, that we wait on that until we do this mental health meeting. The question was, could the mental health, Department of Mental Health, meet whether it's today or tomorrow? They had already set on this up for tomorrow.
Madam President, Madam President, Mr. Peterson, Sheriff Peterson was not contacted, that, that it was his agenda. So, my point is, discussion should be made today, because this is nothing to do with a report from the state tomorrow. Obviously, it's going to be about funding. What the county is facing from involuntary commitments is bed placement. So the number one goal that I think the county should, and if they would follow the lead of the sheriff and I, is that the less cost to the taxpayers is transporting after commitment to a certified mental health facility, and that is on the cost of the state.
We already paid.
But remember, remember.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
Remember AMR was there.
Let me finish, he is interrupting me.
We talked about maybe having AMR.
That is, that is, that is.
Well, so then, I remember well.
Okay. Let me tell you, since Janu-, uh, February first, it's been an issue with the sheriff and I, and the court, on bed placement. The county did the right thing by going or entering into an agreement with Pine Belt for the other services. What the problem is, is beds. And we have, uh, for instance, if you've been getting the census, we can't place anyone there for a pre-hearing. So they go straight to the emergency room. If they don't have anything, it's CSU. Now, the emergency room hospitals, there's three of them now, that I've been able to work out, with those hospitals to take these sick patients for evaluation. They are receiving no funding and no compensation for these patient placements. So what happens, they're there until they have a hearing. They have a hearing, then they're committed. CSU's full, the state's not taking a person for bed, then they're going back to the hospital, where they're not getting psychiatric treatment. They could be paid if there was a code for that patient. They could bill the insurance, they could bill Medicaid. There is no such animal with a person in the emergency room, uh, for funding for pay or source to that hospital. So it's a serious crisis for the hospitals, it's a serious crisis, crisis for the, once they're committed, to be placed in a state facility. So the main thing is, if the board, in its wisdom, would amend the sheriff's budget to create a division for this serious crisis, and not cost taxpayers more money with a contract with the, uh, you could still have a contract with the local hospitals, excuse me, the heavier facilities, but the number one priority is to transport them to other facilities that can take them throughout the state. I've been in contact with Pine Belt Director, and requested that they assist the court in placing the patients throughout the state after commitment. Number one priority, save the taxpayers money. Now, are you paying more for amended budget? Yes, but you're getting a service to the court and to that patient. Thank you.
And, and you're also, John, if I'm not mistaken, my question has been answered in reference to the hospital versus the CSU. That if we use the CSU through Pine Belt, even though you've gone, God knows, throughout the state, it's still, it will probably still be cheaper for us to amend the budget for the sheriff than to pay for those hospitals' commitment.
Absolutely, and this is a, a, a solution for right now. The future solution, obviously, is, and I think, just my opinion, that Harrison County become its own regional mental health, one county, Harrison County, and address the single point of entry for these sick individuals, for law enforcement, for professionals, and, uh, then from there, then commitment, be able to reach out to the state. But right now, we're having a serious issue with bed placement. And we average over four hundred RITs, which means take the custody of an individual for involuntary commitment.
Are we still two beds shy based on personnel at the CSU?
Yeah.
Four now?
Four beds. And, and it's, it's a federal requirement, uh, with patient, uh, to, patients to staff, uh, ratio. Now, I did visit, um, last week with the director, and she said, uh, Mona says it's very close, that they will be allowed, able to open those four other beds. It had to do with training, had to do with recruiting, they're not able to get the nurses and the staff. Um, uh, cancellation on employment, people backing out, so they've been faced with, uh, hospitals throughout, the nation are faced with this after COVID. Once the contracts with these professionals, uh, expired, they were making quite a bit of money, they just kind of, so, taken up liberty.
I may, one question. Sheriff, i- if we approved today, the amendment to your budget includes transport for that, how long will it take you to have that in place? Do you have any idea?
I would say at least eight months.
Eight months?
Six to eight months to get everything. And that's, that's the reason, and, and Beverly, let me just say this, I did, I put this on the agenda for the discussion. I didn't, I didn't want it to get approved, I was aware of what Dr. Ladner said about wanting to go to the, the meeting on Tuesday prior to this, but I think it needed to be discussed in depth, so not only, so everybody understood it, but, but I did put this on the, on the agenda. Now, going back to.
Okay, well, I just thought that Brittany had pulled it back over, and I knew when I went back and told, looked at the minutes, that Dr. Ladner had said, well, how do we waste the last we speak to the Department of Mental Health?
I just wanted everybody in today's meeting to understand that this is, this is a, you know, although there's, I think there's eighty thousand, seventy thousand built into that amendment, that would only be paid one time, because that would be equipment, we wouldn't pay for it a second time.
Gotcha. The only thing you'd be paying for the next time would be personnel.
That's it, and you wouldn't pay for the equipment. So, so, but this is, this unit is, is a critical unit, so, so not only do they have to be state certified, they're going to have to go through CIT training as well for mental health to do this job. It's going to be a, you know, and, and I understand and get allowing AMR or talking to somebody about contracting transport. Um, but the first person that gets in, in the back, an ambulance and tears the sides off of it, they're not transporting anymore, they're done. So, because it's going to cost them too much money to fix whatever they can.
You don't know that for sure, though. Kent, may we get back to Kent's question? I think Kent's question was, can we revisit, we need to vote on, uh, doing the transport after the meeting tomorrow, we can do so. Isn't that what you said, Kent?
Yeah, that was my question, but if we can, that was my issue, but if we can do it today, because I don't think, if we can do it today, I don't know.
I, I didn't mean that, right. It seems to me like what we would be waiting for, for the meeting tomorrow, to see if there's any funding available for that transport. That, we could approve the transport, am I wrong?
Yes, that's correct. The whole issue is, is the county obligation, not only for, for, uh, treatment, if there is not a bed available, for pre-hearing is a county obligation. So it's a county obligation through the sheriff for, for him to have the ability.
My point is, go ahead and get him moving on this thing, and, and the funding, if, if, if we can get available funding, then we can reduce our budget.
Mr. President, I'd like to add on the ambulance, uh, Merritt Health, I, I talked to all these emergency rooms, directors of nursing and the issues they're having with someone that's being held there for, uh, civil commitment. They have to hire security guards, um, they also have contracts with AMR. They have, they had one particular patient that would have been transported to, uh, hurts. However, that was a Friday before the tropical storm that came through, and they reached out to AMR. The last thing or service AMR will offer is a, is this type of transport. It's when they have nothing else going on, they do not dedicate anyone to this transport. So that's the last on the list, and, uh, matter of fact, they did not show to transport this patient from Merritt Health, and they lost the bed with the state. Uh, money came around, they had no, no bed, they held this person for eighteen days in the emergency room.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, based on what I'm hearing today, it's cheap to hire the, the sheriff's department to, uh, create a transport division that it is to use the hospital.
Absolutely.
Well, therefore, I recommend that we authorize him to start the process of doing that, and as far as the budget amendment, and the budget amendment to include that. However, we can adjust that budget amendment based on any funding we get from other sources.
Right.
So that's my motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Is there any discussion, I do understand it is, it is potentially separate from what the sheriff's trying to do as far as the meeting tomorrow. Meeting tomorrow would be about mental health, but we're also trying to get funding, if available, to help the, uh, help our budget out.
Whether we do it or not, we're going to have.
You're still obligated to do it, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't see where, uh, and I, I could be wrong on this when I say this, but I don't, I do not see where, uh, Department of Mental Health will stand up anything to transport anybody in Harrison County. So they, they've never done it before, so I don't, I don't know where that, that's coming from.
Okay, and so we, we, it's been motion and progress, second, my question's been asked, I know if we could do it tomorrow, but if we can do it today, then we go ahead and do it today, so the end of further discussion? All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Get, motion carries, thank you. Next is order proven payment of claim as listed. Item thirty-nine, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item forty. Order authorizing the board president to execute the quarter's report for the sending due to, due to a two sheriff's funding for the law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending in June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion.
Second.
End of further discussion, all in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I, I approve, item forty-one. Order approving the board president to execute the quarter's report for sending due thirty sixty-five sheriff's funding for the law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending in June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. Sorry, how is this different from number forty? That's just the reporting, this is the?
There's, there's, there's two different parts.
Two separate.
Okay. Gotcha, thank you.
The set bills are different.
Okay.
End of further discussion, all in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-two, order proving the local purchase of one twenty twenty-one Jeep Gladiator Freedom Edition from, see, I mean, Chrysler Dodge in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight seventy-six, and payable from zero zero one, two hundred nine fifteen. Authorizing the county administrator to transfer the funds from zero zero one, two eleven, four sixty-eight, to zero zero one, two hundred nine fifteen. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm in this one.
Same beat. Okay, all in, end of further discussion, all in favor, the motion.
Just hide and pray for a ride.
That's part, that's part two.
Not a budget amendment, sorry.
All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item forty-three. Order authorizing the Harrison County Sheriff's Office to enter into a agreement with the United States Department of Interior and National Park Service, Gulf Island, National Park Service. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll explain this, this, we have, we have what's called concurrent jurisdiction. Um, you know, our jurisdiction on the water goes all the way out to ship islands. So we have concurrent jurisdiction with, with, um, national, the National Park Service and DMR, we're all combined in that. So, uh, what they're trying to do is, this is a, this is a, an MOU we've signed before, and we're just, they're just redoing it, but it's a, it gives us concurrent jurisdiction, if something happens on the island, we can respond, we can take care of it, and we're, and we're, our guidelines to do that.
Okay, end of further discussion. All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item forty-four, order authorizing Chancellor Clerk to issue a check for ten thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to Robert Grace, Nacartis Division, for the Gulfport Office of Homeland Security Investigations, payable from line zero three zero two eight one six thirteen. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item forty-five, discuss the SN sprinkler system.
This is a, this is a security issue, and I'd like to talk about this in the next session.
Okay. Okay, item forty-five, we'll discuss. Item forty-six. County administrator order dedicating the Notre Republic, Notre Republic Commission application for Valerie Geo Pruitt, our service administrative assistant for Harrison County and the body of the same. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item forty-seven, order approving the following changes, to the be of take home of this. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item forty-eight. Order proving mileage reimbursement for each county traveler for the following employees. Can you get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Here, item forty-nine, order taking off the table, declaring the following item in surplus, approving the donation of the same MMR team, North, North Division, Alliance County Corner, and authorize inventory clerk to remove the same from the inventory list. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, did, did we have, Tim, I think there was an issue about a request that he's. Well, what about this one?
We got.
I got, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I end of further discussion. All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item fifty. Item fifty, order declaring the following item in surplus, approving the donation of the same MMR team, North Division, Alliance County Corner, and authorize inventory clerk to remove the same from the inventory list. Motion carries.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-one, order authorizing a payment in amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand to the city of Biloxi, for the Biloxi quarter fund for third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-one. payable from the count zero seven eight, one hundred seven oh one. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. I know, I know.
I don't like you.
All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item fifty-two, order authorizing a tax budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-three, on the Chancellor Clerk. Order proving payments of claims listed.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item fifty-four, order authorizing entry to duty one, as listed, per typically filed with the Chancellor Clerk. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-five, order approving resolution in the matter of regular and special home stay exemption, rejected by the Department of Revenue for the year twenty twenty. First and second, the district of Harrison County misses the motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item fifty, under the board agenda. Order approving attenuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency within Harrison County due to the spread of COVID nineteen as adopted in March fifteen twenty twenty. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, item fifty-seven. Resolution approval letter requesting MDA to increase ED HP grant to a total of seven point two million for roadway improvement to serve municipal state veterans, nursing home, and tradition, and their related developments. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Tim, are we comfortable with their warranty or whatever it is that they would, you know?
We, Marlon, I can answer that, I talked to, um, Gerald yesterday, or David, because I was concerned about the county. I was doubtful because I was concerned about the county having any type of liability on that. So he, it does not, we do not have any. This is all matched with traditions owners match and his responsibility and liability as well.
Anything they do, Connie, but they, they found, they signing a, I don't know what the legal term is, that they're accepting the responsibility if there's a forfeit on that camp. Are you comfortable with enforcing that, push comes to shove? We're talking about seven million dollars.
Remember what we signed, Ford, they signed a commitment on the two million, I think it's two point two or two point seven original grant.
Right.
And they did sign an agreement that would back, back up. This is an amendment to that grant, so their position is that warranty that they are guaranteed they signed originally would also apply to that. Keep in mind what that agreement was, they personally guaranteed, I'm sorry, the community, the corporation guaranteed that they own, I think it was ninety million dollars of property out there, and that's the guarantee. As long as that property's worth ninety million dollars, the guarantee sits there. If it's not worth ninety million, then potentially.
Right.
Can't ever say never.
I think it's worth more than that.
Well, I mean, that's what the agreement says back in the day. So the good thing about this grant is it's based on the veterans home being built, which is not.
Which is most likely to happen.
Gonna happen, and they only got a hundred employees, they estimate a hundred and fifty employees. So fortunately, I think this one will be fine.
Even though we are conduits, we're responsible for.
If, if they defaulted on the jobs, the county could be responsible for the grant. If there's not a guarantee by community for whatever it may come.
Seriously guaranteed, though, from what I understand, that from their attorney.
That's right.
Yeah.
They're guaranteeing it. He, and we'll, we'll confirm that in one fashion or another. I have added, the resolution has a provision there that says that. But they said that we need anything else, sign it, sign that also. But I, I think it's fine.
And it is for the veterans home.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion, item fifty-seven? No, no. All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-eight. Resolution approving application of two million two hundred thousand dollar grant for the Mississippi Development Authority Development Infrastructure Program to construct public water and wastewater utility improvements and related infrastructure phase two of the tradition medical city to serve Mississippi State veterans, nursing home, and traditions. Requesting authorization from Harrison County to construct the improvement. Acknowledged that the east central Harrison County Public Utility District shall maintain state water and wastewater utilities incorporated. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, that motion say aye. All opposed? Get motion carries. Item fifty-nine, order approving payments of Ron McTone at his dwelling, Inc. Consulting leaders for invoice twenty four zero four four in amount of nine thousand four hundred dollars for professional service rented for the period in June thirty of twenty twenty-one related to acquisition, acquisition surveys for private numbers. South twenty four fifty-nine intersection improvement canal road and that. Motion.
Um, I gotta be honest, can we table this? I didn't get, I didn't get with you on this. Is this for what we discussed, the going south, or is this, I'm sorry, could you come up, Doug?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I trust y'all, but I'm just, this is kind of.
This is for all properties. We had, we surveyed eleven or so properties.
Is this in the last three months, or is this all that you've done before?
No, this is the last, the last three months.
Things that we talked about?
Yes. Whenever we shifted the roads south, all the ones that we impacted, we had to write new, make new survey. Excuse me, make new surveys, new drawings, new whatever.
And was that the discounted price that we discussed? Because this feels, I was never given a number, and I'm the one that asked you to do all this, so I just feel like I need something about it.
The discount is further design. This has been approved in a prior board meeting, we gave an estimate.
And this was the amount of the estimate?
Yes, ma'am.
For the adjustment. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, thank you, I'll make the mention then.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, you understand, I just.
Yes, I'm sure, sure.
All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Get motion carries. Item sixty, order approving the request of Mississippi bar to issue first judicial dish request house to go share in June select on January twenty ninth twenty twenty-two to hold in twenty twenty-one Mississippi High School mock trial post regional.
Motion.
Second.
January.
January. Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-one, order approving request to have George Burgess.
Boujois.
Boujois. Ten was painted and.
Wayne's coated.
Wayne's coated, the estimate cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, the motion say aye. I won't tell it, that's a weird one.
Doesn't require any kind of amendment?
Y'all just have to okay it.
There was an issue once time with Judge Vias, too, with the death.
We already did.
We did that?
We did those court rules and everything for Judge Vias.
Okay.
But I don't know that.
Item sixty-two, approving that homeless coalition's request for the sixth draw in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars for emergency rental assistance program to be paid from zero six nine six eight six seven hundred and invoice number ten twenty-one for administrative expenses in the amount of sixty thousand to be paid from zero six nine six eight six five five six. Fund will be used to provide assistance to Harrison County residents who have been impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion.
Discussion.
That's an administrative cost of sixty thousand, that?
It was, it was ten percent of the grant.
Is that what it is?
And so they give that sixty thousand.
Okay, yeah, that would be, yeah, a little under ten percent.
Right. All right. Any further discussions? Item sixty-two. All in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-three. Order approving the board president to execute the corporate agreement, cooperative agreement with the Mississippi Department of Violent Equality for the Silo West Assistance Grant S thirty thirteen eighteen in amount of twenty-four thousand eight sixty-three for the household hazards who have this waste site ending December thirty first twenty twenty-two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Get motion carries. Item sixty-four, order dedicating the following application for the twenty twenty-three Ty Lanes, Ty Lanes funding for private listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Second.
All in favor, the motion say aye. All opposed?
Somebody hit the delay button, don't you understand?
Item sixty-five, order rescinding.
I'm sick, Manny, I'm cutting some flat.
We got you. We got you. Order, item sixty-five is already rescinding approval of the resolution to direct and sell and award the taxable note series twenty twenty-one of the county in a principal amount of not to exceed ten million dollars as approved by the board of July sixth twenty twenty-one. File number twenty-one thirteen ninety-eight. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion. That, that, we did that, how come we did that there? What did we do last? Approved?
Tim, do you want to? They said it was a screener's error.
Pardon?
There was a screener's error.
Scrim, oh, okay.
Just so you know, there's a.
They carried the wrong statute.
They asked for a validation like we do for a bond, and so we were putting that together. And when Trish looked up the statute, she said this statute doesn't authorize it, so we got looking at it, and it was the wrong statute in the original resolution. Rather than correct it as a screener error, which then you would have two resolutions. I just thought it would be better to do one and redo it, so that's the only reason for it.
And then they'll hurry on this, is?
No, they said it was fine to go ahead and redo it. I asked that question, would it cause a problem? They said no. But otherwise, you're gonna have an original resolution that are corrected, screener's error just looks bad. We see that the first time through.
Okay.
So it just has the wrong statute number. One, it may have been a typo, one, one number off.
Okay, any further discussion, item sixty-five. All in, if not all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-six. Order approving resolution directing the sale and award of a taxable note series twenty twenty-one of the county in a principal amount of not to exceed ten million dollars for related purposes. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
That's simply correct, that.
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-seven. Order denying, order denying claims of Amelia DeGio.
Florida.
The Shaw Hope. Shaw Hope seeking damage results from an automobile accident. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion.
Second discussion, what?
What is it? I don't know why we don't have back, backups for it, but it was an accident involved in the sheriff department. Vehicle, I believe.
The road manager.
This one's a road manager?
Tennessee man, yeah.
This is the one on Highway nine.
Oh, oh, well, we do recommend denying the claim. I don't know why we didn't put backup there.
There's a backup. Uh, just get an order.
Oh, it's behind the door?
Yeah. What was that?
This is, um.
About three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Tim. Me and my secretary was hit, turning off Highway nine. With highway road, car running red light.
Oh, car running red light, hit him?
Hit me.
Hit him?
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he had a secretary.
I'm on a totally wrong.
He had a secretary.
Tim, I get it.
Wrong accident.
She was with you?
There's so many other people.
They had gone to a meeting that recorded us.
I know that.
And left my office and.
Wasn't great.
Did they file the claim, they hit you and filing the claim?
Right. What is their claim?
Right here.
They played with their own chair, but they hit him.
Yeah.
Have we filed a claim against him?
Need to challenge them.
Yeah.
Do we ever do that, Tim?
I'm sorry, but you can't. Now, he would have to personally. Now, the county can collect it, any medical bills paid or any damage to the vehicle, but he would have to file a claim.
Right, my secretary's too. It's her, she's the head for the board. We stopped, we watched him come to his. We stopped.
That's the other department.
Well, you should make a claim. She should, she was hurt.
She should, actually, yeah, she might be given a replacement.
Is that?
I don't think they were hurt, were they?
I don't. Knee was bruised, stuff like that, nothing.
Horse park, my brother.
Take your mind out of it. I don't think they worried about her. If I was trying to speed up their people, they'd send her in her.
Would've been worse.
They're about to claim vegetable no law. They're about to say, okay. Any further discussion to deny the claim on item sixty-seven? All in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Get motion carries. Item sixty-eight. Order approving the waiver of run fees for the use of the, the Pacific Center by the Trinity Foundation to host the silent auction golf app for in August seventh twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-nine. Order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-sixth twenty nineteen and August thirty-first twenty twenty for the tax parcel listed in the order for twenty eighteen twenty nineteen tax erroneous and does void the app and issue and for related purposes. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy, order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-sixth twenty nineteen and August thirty-first twenty twenty for tax parcel number zero four zero five N zero one zero two three for twenty eighteen and nineteen tax erroneous and does void the app and issue and for related purposes. Any motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-one, order approving installation of street license listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Order approving advertising for promotion and participation in cruising the coast twenty twenty-one. Motion. Motion.
No amount, hey?
No amount. That's just ten thousand in the backup.
Ten thousand. Ten thousand, same as previous, okay. Can we get a motion for item seventy-two? I'll make a motion, you get a second.
Okay, I'll second and discuss, and I love them, and they bring a huge economic impact to us, but they also make a whole buttload of money. I just don't know why the taxpayers still need to help them with their costs, but that's just.
I agree. Sheriff, how much does it cost you? Don't y'all have extra personnel?
We have, I have a total.
And everything?
We have a total, and I can't tell you where it is off the top of my head, but it's, it's meant several thousand dollars, you know, that we put out.
That we budgeted for you for that, or do we have to amend?
Special events. Now, you don't amend my budget, I pay for it.
But we paid for it. I mean, the county's paying for you for that.
For example, uh, they don't pay, you know, Cruisin' the Coast Board doesn't pay any local interest to any, anything back. They don't give anything back to them. The one year I, I kind of raised my hand about it, said, you know, this didn't, didn't write for the citizens that you need to pay for something, he sent me a check of three hundred dollars. So I sent it back to him. But, uh, it's just, you know, it just doesn't make any sense.
Kind of we're providing all that, that we're, we're providing services and already paid for services.
Have their own security then?
They do now, yeah, because we, none of the cities will, the counties won't give them anything. Well, I'm not gonna say it's security, I think it's just volunteer.
But you do have to put officers out.
We have to, you have a choice.
On road.
Traffic control.
Yeah, he's still paying.
The city of Biloxi spends a lot more than I do. But the setup fees and everything that we have, that we have to set up to Coliseum and I mean, that's a full detail for a week, you know, with thirty guys. Lock on. Lot more.
Did, uh, supervisor, supervisor Martin, she's still on, I, I hadn't heard her late. Beverly, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, you, you have anything to say on?
Tell them that Cruising the Coast.
You have anything you want to say about item seventy two?
But here's the deal, y'all, we got, we got the money back in RV rentals that the Cruising people were advertising. I don't know if Greg White, I mean Greg, um, with Phil there, but he said last year we got ninety six hundred back, so we really only spent total. And as far as security goes, my knowledge, Cruising has always had their own security at each event site. Or Swepton Security, actually, now as far as the cities and, uh, there's really not a lot happening on the county side other than the same they experience. I believe they provide law enforcement for traffic, and so just like they did spring break, scrape them across to any other large event.
Okay. So we have a, uh, motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion for item seventy two? Not what called, what called, all in favor of the motions say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Aye.
I didn't hear Miss Rocco.
Connie?
Supervisor Rocco?
Um, what, I'm sorry, what'd y'all say?
Where do you put your vote? Who needs your vote?
Item seventy two.
I'm, I'm sorry, no.
Ten thousand for Cruising the Coast, yea or nay?
I, I'm a yes, sir, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. All of it, I thought y'all finished with that.
Okay, that's quite all right, understanding communication. Okay, all, my motion carries item seventy three, order adjudicating authorized expenditures listed as necessary to advertise the opportunities and we're supposed to have some kind of motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion on eight, five thousand, what exactly seafood festival? Is that open to the public?
Yeah, that's the big, you know, point to that every year, and now it's at the Maritime Museum.
I didn't want to take item eight, yeah, item eight. We take item number eight, separate from B and C, so we call the motion for item, item number eight, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting item eight? Can we get a motion? We got a motion second, all in favor say aye, all opposed, can item eight carry? Item B and C combined, motion?
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye. Were you the second, Ken?
Pardon?
Were you the second?
Yeah, I'll second, yeah, I'm sorry, all in favor say aye? All, motion carries. And we're now going to closed session. Thank you everybody for coming. Be safe.
Should you ask us? Should we talk about things that?
I can't hear.
We have anything else, or we do that after closed session?
We can, okay, yeah, we can, I'm, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind someone.
We'll go around the horn a little bit. Sheriff, you good? I'm good.
So, um, my social media person, my assistant, uh, community outreach person, I should say, Kimmy Banks can no longer work for us, and I've accepted Maggie Banks to replace her, and I just wanted to make a motion to adjudicate that, she started on Tuesday.
Okay, motion to communicate it, okay, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor of that motion say aye, all opposed, that motion carries.
And then I know that youth court judge Mike Dickinson has asked, uh, that we give him a space for the visitation room, so he can stay in line with his, uh, grant for the FIP. So I'd make a motion to all the youth court, the, um, yellow trailers that was used by CASA for years, it's on the Maples campus. It's perfectly adjacent to the new CASA building that we gave them, it's not a new building, but we recently gave CASA the building, and it's more than enough room for the visitation according to the grant. So I'd like to make a motion to, that that would be our final offer to youth court, that they could use their visitation as soon as possible.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? Of that issue, all in favor of that motion say aye, all opposed, that motion carries.
Is that, let me grab, since that's connected, the one on K was separate.
Yeah, they needed that for the office space, because they were, they have funding for four new employees.
So just so I can bring the board up to that, I got emailed from Ms. Underwood stating that the lessor had rejected, oh, lessor, excuse me. Only the building had rejected a cancellation provision. I had in there, it was a board call recommending a thirty day, that shouldn't have been on the agenda to begin with, because it wasn't final. But regardless of that, it, they, they rejected that, so I asked, I told Judge Dickinson and Ms. Underwood, they need to either go back. Come back before the board and discuss whether or not that was acceptable to the board without a thirty day cancellation provision by the county, or find another building, so I haven't heard from them.
It wasn't a thirty day initial, they wanted like ninety days and no cancellation at all?
No cancellation provision at all, they said the lease was at such a low rate that they couldn't have that in there.
So they want to do most of them?
Nope, they want a two-year lease.
Period.
Right.
We, there's no way we can know what can happen to.
Well, you can't contract beyond your term anyway, but that, that would come up with cancellation, I guess in twenty twenty three, you think the next term, um, either way, but, um, I mean, I. I have, the problem with it is, if something goes wrong with the grant and they don't need it anymore, you're going to be stuck with a build eventually, so that was the reason we put it in there was. Thank goodness that, that, I, Westminster building worked out, but we didn't have a cancellation provision, and that was the reason I insisted here. I don't know what to do. I said, I just, I'm sorry, I'll speak.
I can't hear y'all.
Okay, I just don't know what to do, I'm reporting to the board that we approved the lease with that cancellation provision, the lessor has rejected that cancellation provision, it's not proposed an alternative. And I instructed Ms. Underwood and the judge to go either find another building or come to the board and argue whether or not they wanted a, the lease without that provision.
Are they right? Is it very low rent? Is it worth the risk? I mean, I'd hate to make them go back to the drawing board again.
I don't know, that's why I'm reporting to the board, they didn't come, so I don't know what their position is.
It's right here.
Yes, ma'am.
It's all in this area where they are.
We can do it without the cancellation provisions, the board wants it.
Your market's a term of the lease?
Twenty, uh, two and a half years, basically.
Is that, is that the time of the grant, though?
Grant is three years.
It's, it's left, the remainder of the grant, so the grant's already, part of it's already gone by, so two and a half years, basically, the balance of the lease. I'm just trying to seek to get it done. If the board wants it not to have the cancellation provision, you could end up with a building that's empty that you have to pay for.
What would the lawyer, what would the lawyer say? That's a lawyer dog.
You know. Because of the nature of what's been going on there, I would say I'd be uncomfortable without some ability to get out of the lease if it didn't work out. That's, for the county to be stuck with a bill, an empty bill and paying for it for some period of time would be, not prudent, in my opinion, but. Lessors want their money too, they won't certainly.
Yeah, I mean, we need to make, I have to make a decision, I mean.
Y'all can decide, I'm all right.
They didn't ask for.
I can see in Trish's eyes, she wouldn't do it, if it were you personally, you wouldn't do it. You wouldn't do it, huh?
The question is, what's the risk? The risk is two and a half years of rental if something, if they didn't use the building.
Just two years, you said the lease.
Two and a half. Well, it goes into twenty three, it's for the balance of the.
How about we offer them a one-year lease without the guarantee? Would they be happy with that?
They might.
Let's go back and offer, if y'all don't mind, maybe?
No, I don't.
A one-year lease and we don't have the guarantee?
Yeah, we could do, put a renewal with the option of a cameo.
I know there's, there's circumstances there, like the grant, all that kind of stuff, but I think one's not too wise to go into a lease for what, three years, you said?
Two and a half.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half, no, ah.
Without anyhow, you just, that's.
Can we ask, they, we didn't request they come here today, huh?
No, we didn't, I brought it up because it's hanging there right now, I, I thought maybe they might send an email or something.
Go back and offer them, let's see if they'll do it for a year.
And then have a one-year renewal?
Yeah.
Okay.
A renewal, we'll take the risk.
That'd be good, yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, I'll send that suggestion to them.
Do we make big?
Actually, your permission, I'm going to modify the lease and.
I don't know if we just authorize Tim to make that.
When you make the motion, then Tim just authorize you to.
Yep, authorize me to modify the lease to that effect and send it to them.
Okay, motion, second, okay.
One year and a one-year renewal, then a renewal to the end of that, we have pre-renewal, or two renewal.
Two, okay, one for one year again, one, I guess the other year and a half. Okay, all right, all right, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion say aye, all opposed, that motion carries. Now, uh.
You mind asking them what they want?
Okay, Beverly, uh, and Connie, you have anything?
Yes, Senator Jones, I think Mr. Leinberger with the pickleball people, he may be in there. They've requested that we, we met with him and, uh, three representative Kevin Belcher. They have applied for a grant to upgrade their pickleball courts over here off the Pops Ferry. Anyway, they suggested that we apply to the grant, however, I don't know that we can do that, so at this point, I think that we just do a resolution supporting their efforts. Is Mr. Tom in there, he could explain more about what they're looking for?
Yes, Mr. Tom, you come up right there by yourself.
Who does the field belong to?
Beloxi.
Beloxi? Why, why, Beloxi?
No, I, I don't know if it's Beloxi or the county, but if it's in the city of Beloxi, she'll probably.
If it's Beloxi, huh, why wouldn't they help you with the grant?
Beloxi originally asked.
If you come up and you say for the record, please.
My name's Tom Leinberger, um, I live in Beloxi, resident, Harrison County, um, we, uh, we have a nonprofit, Mississippi Gulf Coast Pickleball. The nonprofit is a public charity, the whole purpose of it is to, uh, promote health and wellness in our communities through the game of pickleball, Martin, you do.
Yeah.
Martin, you, you're aware of it out.
I'm aware.
Okay, well, what we've got is, um, out at the Pops Ferry area, belonging to the city, we have twelve outdoor courts. What we're looking to do is expand that facility to another twelve, that would be twenty-four total courts, which would make, um, this area a regional area for tournaments and draw a lot of players in here. We're also looking to cover those twelve, um, with a, um, pre-engineered building, just to covering to make it all-weather, because it's very difficult to play this time of year. And also with, uh, with, uh, tournament situations. Uh, we also need to increase parking. The city of Beloxi has already approved seventy-five thousand in a, uh, capital improvement project to build restaurants out there. So the entire project, unfortunately because of cost of things, is, uh, estimated right now at around two point five million dollars. Okay, we're applying for a Gulf Coast, um, Restoration Fund grant. Kevin has kind of helped us a bit, uh, we met with the city of Beloxi, we, we're doing it as a phase two project. Phase one is already eighty thousand that we put into converting these tennis courts into pickleball courts. Phase two, uh, is, of course, doing all the addition too. Unfortunately, we need a lot of matching funds, and we as a nonprofit really don't have anything. Uh, we just, uh, we've been on board for about a year and a half, uh, we promote, uh, tournaments for charities, we promote. Matter of fact, tomorrow, we're going to city a golf court and teaching all their PE coaches, twenty of them, how to play pickleball to get it into their school system. So we do those kind of things. So what we're looking for is from the city of Beloxi to, um, quite frankly, we can't submit this grant without a resolution from public entities. Um, whether they're going to help support us with matching funds. Okay, and this meeting we had, um, back in this, in this room here about two and a half weeks ago. Um, Beloxi said, uh, they right now got about a hundred fifty-five thousand in kitty. Uh, they said they give another hundred thousand. Um, I'm not going to speak for our two supervisors, but they came up with, hey, this is a pretty good thing, and we thought, at that time, it was recommended, maybe we, the county would submit for this grant. So we've been preparing for the county to be the submitter of the grant, and Beloxi and, um, our nonprofit being partners. So we got to get that resolved between now and the thirtieth, because the, the modules open until the thirtieth to submit the project. And without anything from the county and the city, we can't really go anywhere.
When you think of submitting, uh, uh, the county submitting the project, are you talking about money with that, or something?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, if we get any money from the Gulf Coast Restoration Funds, we might not get nothing, we might get part of the project. And we have to come up with twenty percent of matching funds, it's a great investment, with twenty percent, you get another eighty thousand dollars worth of whatever. Uh, we, we have, uh, we, we have a lot of statistics that.
How much, I'm sorry, how much is the grant?
Well, what we're asking for is two point five million dollars.
A grant?
Yes, so we need five hundred thousand dollars of support, uh, and this, of course, this grant would, if we get it, it's going to be probably in the twenty twenty-three timeframe, but it's, it's for the twenty twenty-two. And so, uh, we're, we're really kind of dead in the water without, um, having some outside support from public entities. But if it is from public entities, they, they've got to say there's a resolution or some type of commitment, we'll help out with this if in fact that they give us any money. That, that Gulf Coast Restoration Fund is about, last year about fifty million, um, a lot of chunk of it went to the, um, the cyber center, uh, that's being built over here, I think in Keesler. And, uh, so, yeah, Beverly, am I okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with me, I just wanted to, uh, Representative Belcher suggested the county apply for the grant, but I don't know all the details on that. So I told Mr. Tom I'd bring it to the board, would a resolution just supporting your efforts be okay, and then if you get the, whatever amount of grants you get, it could be fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, she.
That, that's all the resolution.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what you're saying.
Mr. Tom, I got a question, what does it take to build a pickleball court? How much, how much is it?
Well, just.
Breaking mortar to do everything out, what does it cost?
Well, the, the cost is, uh, the, um, concrete cost for all the, uh, post tension slab and things such as that, and all the footings and everything else to put the building up, because you got to realize.
No, I'm talking about the court itself, not the building.
Well, the court probably close to, probably close to four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand.
To build the court?
Yes.
Okay.
One court?
One court.
No, no, twelve courts.
Twelve courts.
Twelve courts. And because.
There's no existing courts now.
Well, there is, right now, there's twelve, that used to be tennis courts and we converted them with.
Converse.
Yeah, but in order to have, uh, regional tournaments, it, and, uh, one of these tournaments, we, we predicted probably around seven hundred players. And they usually stay at least three nights, most of them stay at the casinos, we've got a lot of visitors that come with us right now and, and stay with us. We, we worked with, um, Coastal Mississippi, trying to find out the economic impact. We have people that are relocating to our community, retirees, because first off, they like the coast, but pickleball seems to be something that also draws them because they're over fifty-five, most of them.
Just to clarify something, you, you're applying for the state for a grant, about how much would the grant be for the state?
Well, it would, two point five million, that's what we're asking for.
Two point five million?
That's what we're asking for. We, we probably got a snowball chance where, yeah.
I'm sorry.
And how much did Beloxi say they would match, one seventy-five?
Well, uh, Beloxi so far has got a hundred fifty-five in because.
One fifty-five?
It's in kind already.
In kind, that's fine.
And then when they ended up, uh, Mike Leonard was here at the meeting that we had, and he said the mayor said at least another hundred thousand.
So two fifty-five? Beloxi's willing to do two fifty-five?
Yeah, it'd be two, at least.
We passed a resolution asking Beloxi to submit the whole amount. We just gave three hundred fifty thousand.
We sure did.
Three seventy-five.
Now, the mayor's much in favor of this project, because he thinks it could be a good driver, and, uh.
I would imagine, though, if we just do the resolution, it will be responsible for the match, is that right, Tim?
Yeah.
Whatever that amount would be.
After.
If they get the full amount.
Give it out, right.
If we get the full amount. The other thing the county could do is, in kind, if you did the parking lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
If you said you'd do the parking lot, that's an in-kind donation for the project.
Yeah, we could, we could.
Now, the parking lot.
Could that be counted, Tom, could that be counted as part of your match?
According to the regulation rules and regulations, yes, if it's part of.
I think we have some in kind, so this is Connie, I think we have done some in kind as well, uh, really before, haven't we?
We have approximately ten thousand. Approximately ten thousand in that eighty thousand initial that we had phase one, the county gave me money to buy, um, uh, cabanas, court cabanas for shade, benches. Connie bought me some.
We also, we also did the parking lot a long time ago, a long time ago.
Okay.
How much, how much was that, Connie, because that's what we're probably looking.
I do not know, it's, it's well be, it's some time ago if you did.
Okay.
We, we did.
What we're, what we're trying to do.
You have to, Gary, Gary would know.
Okay.
Okay, well, we tell you.
If I may pull you, just say something, sport, pickleball is a big thing with the city, they're very active.
And it's safer and easier than tennis, older people can't play tennis at all.
Children's recreation.
Yeah.
We currently have about six hundred and seventy players along the Mississippi Gulf Coast.
Is it free to use the court? Is it free to use the court?
It's free.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I'm good with it, I mean.
I'm fine with doing a matching with this, maybe a hundred thousand committing up to that, and if you get the full amount of grant, which I'm not thinking you will, with all due respect. We could bring it back to the board, but, um, Representative Belcher didn't, he said apply for all of it, but not to expect to get it all.
Well, you gotta get two hundred thousand.
Trying to find, but I could make a motion that we support up to a hundred thousand dollars and kind of go from there with the resolution supporting your efforts, are y'all okay with that?
I, I'm sorry. Beverly, where were you?
Yes.
We'd have to, we'd have to trim the project down because, uh, currently, um, currently as we have it that we're going to submit. If they gave us all the money, then we'd have to come up with that amount of matching, which.
Could you not do that phase one until we commit? Connie, get your phone, so we could commit to phase one, and then you come back to the board if, if you get the whole amount, and we could commit maybe to phase two, go back to the city, could you do it that way?
I would have to, um, I'd have to check it out, I, I'm, I'm serious, I, I'm not a hundred percent positive, uh, we could pick, if, if they only gave us a certain amount, we could pare it down to the money they gave.
Right.
The priority being built the additional twenty-four courts.
Tim, can we, we can use escrow money for this, Tim?
You can use.
You can use, uh.
I'm prepared, you know, to, we, we spend thousands of dollars, preparing for these same services of that activity to commit ten thousand.
You can do one money because it's.
My, escrow money.
I agree.
Can you use any of it?
We're good, so where, where are we now? Do we, what do we need to, the resolution is to indicate that we will support the project?
Up to a certain, up to a certain, now, I'm prepared for the ten.
Okay. And I'll, I'll.
Miss, Miss Morton said up to a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I guess we can, if we're gonna support it.
Because Beloxi's kind of, it's already supported.
Beloxi's gonna support it, I, I've gotta get a, a commitment from them, too, but the mayor is committed to help.
So I guess what we're saying is that we support it, then how are we gonna come up with the funds on our end? Is it gonna come out, or each one, escort that commit to it, or what? That's, that's the issue.
I was hoping maybe we could use some rescue funds. In the rescue funds.
Can't count on that right now, so.
Yeah, we don't know.
There's a, there's a big area in there for our recreation.
I'll do what, I'll, I'll commit to.
I'll do ten grand as well.
I mean, you know.
And Beverly, the two Beloxi ladies, would you as well?
I think they said a hundred.
Yeah, if Connie's willing, we could do twenty-five each, and that'll get it to where.
That'll get you.
Okay, good deal.
So that'll get there.
Can we get a, can we, can we get a, a motion to support, can we get a motion to support? Well, go ahead, supervisor.
I'll make the motion.
In reality, uh.
Wait, let's set it.
We, we rolling.
Sorry.
Okay.
Connie, second.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and proper second to support the red, the issue of resolution supporting the, the, uh, pickleball, uh, organization.
The grant.
The grant. The grant, okay.
Up to a hundred thousand?
Not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Not to exceed it.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.